Good evening and welcome everyone. Thanks for taking the night out of your take for taking the time out of your night to join us for this public hearing. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. Just going to be helping to moderate the public hearing tonight, and this is a hearing for an Eagle application submitted by Curtis McDonald in Chickaming Township, Berrion County. Just have a couple logistical things to go through before we get too far with the hearing tonight. First off, this is our agenda. I'm gonna start off with an introduction that we're doing right now, and the big thing to keep in mind is that there's going to be kind of two parts to this hearing tonight. There's going to be an informational session. So the applicant has an opportunity to present information on the proposed project, and we'll follow that up with a short question and answer session where everyone will have a chance to ask a question. And that'll take us to about 6:30, at which time we'll have to move on to the official hearing part. And that's where you'd be able to make a statement for the record on this application and project, and everyone will have an opportunity to do that. And that will be the official hearing portion. And we'll also go through who to contact with further questions and where to find some additional information. All right, in case you haven't done one of these hearings with us before, all lines will be muted during the hearing, except during those times when you want to ask your question or make your statement. We'll explain how to do that a little bit. But you can submit your questions anytime using the Q and A box in your Zoom toolbar, and what we'll do is we'll answer those questions during that Q and A session that I talked about. And then also just here where we are recording this hearing, it'll be posted on our YouTube channel in a couple of days if you'd like to forward it on or watch it again. All right, and so at this point, I'd like to invite our other Eagle staff on the line to turn their cameras on and introduce themselves.
Hello, everyone. My name is Riley Walsh, and I'm an environmental quality analyst in the Kalamazoo District Office. Part of my job includes processing permit applications for projects that impact wetlands and the lakes and streams in Berrion County. And we're here tonight because Eagle has received a permit application from Curtis McDonald for construction of a 19 lot residential development impacting a total of .218 acres of forested wetland. Thanks.
Hey, everybody, and I'm Derek Haraldson. I'm the district supervisor for the Water Resources side out of the Kalamazoo District Office, so I oversee staff reviewing projects in Berrion County and other counties for projects and wetlands, critical dunes, and other regulated areas. I'm glad to be here.
All right, yeah, thank you both for being here tonight. At this point, we will unmute our the applicant and representative. We have some slides here that they'll go through. So Curtis McDonald and Joe Von Waldi, we looks like you're unmuted on our end. I have your slides here, so if you just want to let me know when to when to change slides, I will do that. Please keep it to about 10 minutes or less so that we can stay on time tonight. And yeah, thanks for providing us the information.
So live again?
Go ahead, Curtis.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, we can hear you. We can hear you both. You both sound good.
Okay, great. My name's Curtis McDonald, and I originally acquired this site because I am interested and have been for some time in doing a development of what I call cabins in the woods. I've always been inspired by the, you know, the little narrow lanes in Chickaming Township and the vintage cabins and cottages that you'll see there. I don't have an interest in recreating, you know, another Chicago subdivision. And the intent all along is to build these homes and to sell them. I know there was some concern these are being built for the purpose of short term rentals. That is not the case. We're going to build these homes and sell them. We're not going to prohibit short term rentals. And the use of any home as a short term rental will be governed by the ordinances of Chickaming Township. The number of units that we have is reflective of the original plan that was approved by Eagle, which was 19 homes on 19 lots of just over two thirds of an acre each. We subsequently discovered that that plan, the permits had expired. And so what it did allow me to do is go back to my desire to do a development where the homes would be clustered and the majority of the site would be open space. A final comment that I'll make is you'll see these squares on the map. Those are building envelopes. They're about 2,500 square feet. The homes I am proposing are small. It will require permission from Chickaming Township. Chickaming Township needs homes that are over 900 square feet. I hope to do something smaller at 740 square feet. What that will mean is these squares that you see, the home will only fill up one third of that area. So the coverage on the site will actually be considerably less even than what this map shows. So I just wanted to have that background, why I'm doing it, and the the homes will be for sale. And then I'll turn it over to Joe to go through the slide presentation.
All right, thanks, Curtis. And thank you, everyone, for coming to the public hearing. My name is Joe Von Waldi. I'm with Mergent. I'm the environmental consultant for McDonald Development. Next slide, please. So the wetland delineation for this site was done in March of 2023 by DanTech. And I was an employee of Stan Tech at the time, so I was on site. So Eagle does allow wetland delineations to be conducted outside the growing season, but typically they may require a second site visit within the growing season to verify wetland hydrology and vegetation. So on August 19th, when I was now with Mergent, went back to the site to verify wetland hydrology and vegetation. And then on the 25th of August, met with Eagle representatives here on the call, Riley and Derek, to walk the site with them and review the wetland delineation, and they agreed with my delineation at that time. One of the things I want to make note of is that so our wetland delineation went to the to the edges of the property boundaries. But about 77% of the property boundaries that wetland extends off to adjacent property owners. So that might be a reason why, you know, from the public comments, there are a lot of people saying that their their properties were flooding and that sort of thing. I mean, it could be that they have wetlands on the property. And also I wanted to state that the MD and IRA confirmed there are no threatened endangered species that will be affected by the proposed project. Next slide, please. So the purpose of the development, like Curtis had said, is to is to construct a 19 lot development for homes. And there are two main activities that are regulated for this project. The one is to construct a road, a main road coming in on the east side of the development that will impact .11 acres of forested wetland. Now, there's a this road is a 30 foot wide, 172 foot long road. And just so you know, that 30 foot wide is base width. It's not the surface road width. Also installing three 18 inch diameter culverts for equalizing to maintain maintain hydrology on both sides of the road. And then also to install utilities adjacent immediately adjacent to the road. This will this will be a temporary wetland impact of .14 acres. It will be trenched in, the utilities will be placed in there and back filled back through to original grade. So it'll be restored back to wetland area. Next slide. So this again is the development proposed. You see the road on the east side coming in. That's one of the proposed wetland impacts. And the next one I'll talk about is the driveway to lot 11. But as you can see, all of the proposed building structures are outside of wetland. There won't be any wetland impact for the proposed building structures. Next slide. So so the original development proposed in 2006 was based on a wetland delineation where there was a lot less wetland than what we found in March of 2023 and August of 2023. And so given the increased acreage of wetland, McDonald needed McDonald Development needed to maximize the amount of building area and minimize the amount of wetland impact. So the only wetland impacts proposed are for that main road coming in and then for the driveway going out to an upland building site for lot 11. So they're proposing an 18 foot wide, 240 foot long driveway, which will impact .10 acres of foresting. And then originally, there was a we had proposed a 24 inch diameter equalizing covert. And when we're on site in August, Eagle had said that they would like to see two additional equalizing covers. So those were added to the plan. And then the utilities are proposed all within the driveway footprint. So there won't be any additional wetland impact outside of the driveway, even though it would be temporary. Next slide. And so for mitigation for the wetland impact, the .21 acres of wetland impact, McDonald Development will purchase .44 acres of forested wetland mitigation bank credits to realize a two to one replacement ratio. Next slide. So the this hearing is focused on a permit request for wetland impacts and not for stormwater design. But since it seemed like there was a lot of concern about the stormwater on the site, we felt it was necessary to talk about that. And so all the stormwater will be directed to a retention basin. However, that retention basin size shown on the site plan may not be the exact size of the basin. It will be based upon the direction from the Berrion County Drain Commission. All stormwater from the proposed development will be handled onsite and not be directed offsite. Next slide. So I just wanted to quickly talk about some of the response, some of the public comments. There was a comment about soil erosion and sedimentation into the wetland area. A soil erosion and sedimentation control permit will be secured prior to construction to minimize sedimentation to the adjacent wetlands. And all proper, all best management practices will be in place. There's no core jurisdiction on this property. The core only regulates wetlands that are adjacent to navigable waters. And there isn't anything on that site. So there's that doesn't apply. Lot 11 does not approach pond wetland. There was a comment about lift stations, but those will not be needed because each home will have a sewage grinder pump in a unit in it. And the HOA will protect wetlands adjacent home sites by legal document. Again, all home sites are proposed outside of the wetland. Home sites near the wetland were staked, and all location stakes are outside the wetland boundary. And those stakes were reviewed in August by Eagle representatives. And all proposed development is outside of previously recorded conservation easements. The existing conservation easements on this property have no bearing on this project or permit application. And that's the end of my presentation. I'll give it back to Eagle. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Curtis and Joe. For taking the time to provide us that presentation. We're going to move right into the question and answer session right now. So here's how you, if you would like to ask a question, there's a number of ways you could do it. You could either type it in the Q and A box. It looks like a number of you have already typed some questions in there. You see that the bottom of your screen. Or if you prefer to ask your question verbally, you can click the hand icon at the bottom of your screen, and that will raise your hand in Zoom. And we will kind of go back and forth between the raised hands and the questions in the Q and A box. If you're on the phone, it looks like we do have some phone in callers. You can also raise your hand in Zoom by selecting pound two on your phone. And so if you select pound two, that'll raise your hand in Zoom will call on you using the last four digits of your phone number. And and you'll have an opportunity to ask your question. All right, one other thing, just want to make sure you're aware. So this is the time for asking questions. If you have a comment that you'd like to make for the record on this application and project, that'll be a little bit later on. So save your comments for now. I know there's some comments that are in the Q and A box that were typed in. Hold on to those, and you'll have your opportunity to provide those comments during the hearing portion. So with that, let's see here. There are some raised hands and questions. Okay, I'm gonna I'm gonna go start with the Q question, the Q and A box. So the first one on here, there's a lot of, I'm gonna have to paraphrase it because it's a very long, long question, but there's some information in here about how much water would fall during a heavy multi day and rain event. And it says accumulation of eight inches of rain or more not is not uncommon, which would be almost see 1,200 se wise of water all looking to disperse in one small area of the parcel. And so how would that much water not end up traveling along the clay layer below the property to the other properties? So again, I think this is kind of a stormwater related question. Is there any and further information on the stormwater management aspect of this that we can talk about as it relates to the squad this question? Joe?
Yes, I guess I don't understand what what the volume is that they're talking about, I guess.
Yeah, I think it's like se wise at cubic yards, I'm assuming.
Yeah, it's usually cubic yards.
And so the gist of the question is the, I think the rain going to one small area. And the concern is how with all that water not, well, how would that water not end up traveling along the clay lower below the property? I mean groundwater travels. I'm not sure if there's anything we can, is there any additional information, I guess, in the stormwater management?
I I can shed light on that, too. This is Curtis. Only because I have done so many developments. We're adding very little impervious surface to this site. And the calculations for stormwater retention and stormwater management will deal with the increase of impervious surface, which is as far as developments go, very modest with this development. And those calculations will be done. With that kind of a rainfall event, the vast majority of the water will still fall on the forested area. And so that really is the area where you know, significant runoff would occur. And the system that we put in will be designed to handle what the county determines to be the maximum rainfall event in the stormwater management systems that we provide.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that information, Curtis. We're going to go to raised hand. So Olga Price, we are going to unmute you, and then you can ask your question of the panel here. So it looks like you're unmuted, Olga. You can unmute yourself using the microphone icon, and you can ask your question.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, I had two questions in the chat, and actually I have three, so I'm sorry. And first of all, really thank you for having this public hearing. It's very useful. So one question for the homeowners who are around there, what does the purchase of credits? Because this is not something I'm familiar with. What does that do for the homeowners who might be impacted by this if the water levels are changed? I mean, credits sound nice, but if I'm a property owner, what is what does it do for them? So that was question number one. And I'm just trying to understand.
All right, let's start. Let's start there, Olga.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So the credits that they were referring to are wetland mitigation bank credits. So essentially, when someone is proposing to impact a wetland area, if a certain amount of impact is proposed, then the law says that you have to essentially mitigate for those impacts, which is basically if you impact wetlands in one location and they're gone or destroyed, then you have to create wetlands in another location. So there are these things called wetland banks that exist. And so since there will be some wetland impacts associated with this project, Curtis McDonald is proposing to purchase wetland bank credits. So new wetlands will be created in another location in the same watershed. So it shouldn't, going back to your question, it shouldn't impact like homeowner value like value or anything in your location.
Well, no, but if it's if it's another location, that location might be one across Red Arrow Highway or three blocks down or something where frankly, if I'm right next to this, and I'm not, but I'm just trying to understand. If I'm right next to this, I don't really care that you've moved the water way over there. I care the fact that I you've I've got more water on my adjacent property potentially. So, okay, I think I understand the answer. So I was just trying to understand what it does for those property owners who might be affected by this. So thank you. Can I move on to two more questions?
Do one more question, and then we'll let somebody else ask, because there's quite a few.
I've run into the same issue on a different property. So there's if there's a lot of clearing of old growth trees, I'd like you guys to comment on that. But my third question is, is because what's the involvement of Berrion Road Drain Commission in all of this? Because there's a lot of drains on either side of Red Arrow Highway and on property owners on both sides of Red Arrow Highway that have been put into place over the years and not maintained by Berrion Drain, and those take a lot of the extra water. So is this going to hook up to any of those drains or not? Kind of like, are they even involved? Because when I called him once, they basically said Chickaming Township is one big wetland lady.
So Curtis and Joe, do you want to speak to the involvement of the Drain Commissioner's Office on the project?
I mean, yeah, the Drain Commissioner's Office is the is the entity that more or less regulates or requires stormwater. It has stormwater requirements. So if you're if you're proposing stormwater on your site, you have to go through Berrion County Drain Commission to, you know, submit your your detention or retention designs and have them review them and approve or have them, you know, if they if they feel that there is more needed there, like if you need to do rain gardens or something else, then they'll but anyways, that is the approval process, sort of like we're going through Eagle for the wetland permit application. We go through Berrion County Drain Commission for the stormwater approval.
Okay, thank you.
And also, also on this point, very briefly, what Berrion County will do is they'll look at what is the increase of impervious surface on the site, which is basically the roads and the rooftops of the homes. So look at, you know, they'll look at what is the existing condition, and then what changes? How much more runoff will there be due to the development itself? And then with a safety margin, they will require a retention pond and possibly rain gardens that capture with a safety factor an amount greater than the new impervious surface that's created on the site.
Okay, but you're also going to be cutting some old growth trees. So that's really also going to change the ability of this land to suck up the water, correct?
Yeah, Olga, we're gonna have to move on. We only have about 10 minutes of Q and A left, and there are a lot of questions. I want to give some more
Okay.
chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is phone in caller. You have your hand raised. Last four digits is zero six one eight. We are going to unmute you, and then you can ask your question. All right, so looks like you're unmuted. You can you can ask your question, phone and caller.
Okay, hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I have two questions. Thank you for taking my call. I appreciate it. I'm wondering what kind of oversight will there be during the Hello?
Nope, are you there?
What? Yeah, yeah. What kind of oversight will there be during the construction period for the infrastructure and the homes? And then afterwards, when these homes are occupied, make sure that the people that are either living that are living in them, occupying them, are respecting the wetlands. Will there be any type of oversight or will there be any type of barriers established to keep the people out of the wetlands that aren't supposed to be, you know, that are supposed to be left alone? That's my first question.
From I can jump in from the agency standpoint and speak from Eagle's perspective a little bit. So the the property owner is the entity that is legally responsible for making sure that all laws and permits are followed on their property. When it comes to wetland permits and other permits that we issue, Eagle does often provide often performs compliance inspections to make sure that the conditions associated with permits are being followed and to make sure that encroachment into wetland areas aren't happening. So it's the 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 legal responsibility is on the property owner, but Eagle does help keep tabs on our permits.
If there's no barriers established, I mean, people are going to occupy these homes, whether they're residents that own them or they're they're rented out. You know, there's nothing to really prevent them from walking or using the wetland areas. That's my first question. My second question has to do with, do you know who is responsible for managing, I believe they're called regulated wetland conservation easements? I believe there are two or three on the plot. Do you know who is responsible for managing those? Any idea?
Yeah, let me speak a little bit to the conservation easement, because I know we got a couple of the comments received during the public notice period, also spoke to this. So there is a conservation easement on the property that was established by Eagle, and Eagle holds the easement. The reason that easement was established is because Eagle issued a permit for a development on this property in the past. And I think Joe brought that up when he was presenting the project. So as part of the agreement, basically for Eagle issuing that permit, there was a conservation easement established. The work, the work was never done, so that sort of left this conservation easement behind. So Eagle is is the entity that holds the easement. We are aware, and our easement coordinator was aware of this project going through. I don't know what much more to say on that. Joe and Curtis, I don't know if you want to speak to what barriers might be in place to entering the easement area and using it.
Well, I mean, all of the conservation easements that are recorded are outside of the development, so there won't be any impacts to those conservation easements. So it really doesn't have a bearing on the permanent application.
It seems like such a compact plan, and these homes are so close to the areas, it seems, I don't, I don't see how you can do all the construction, the infrastructure and the homes without you know, having some kind of impact. I mean, it's just such a crowded compact plan. That's my comment. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much for your question. All right, we are going to unmute another phone in caller, Stan Wilk. Stan, we are going to unmute you, and you can ask your question when you're ready.
Well, it was just the same follow up question is regarding the old growth trees and how many would need to be removed for this project. And thank you very much for taking my question today.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll answer that question. The idea is to remove the minimum number of trees. And actually, one of the reasons we'd like this more compact site plan is that fewer trees need to be removed. The original plan had a road that was several times larger with much more impact and a greater requirement to remove trees. So we have not done, you know, we don't know precisely how many trees will have to be removed other than the theme of what I'm doing is cabins in the woods. And so our intent will be to preserve as many trees as possible. And one of the good things about the wetland area is that all of those trees, which is the vast majority of the site, will be undisturbed. So that's basically, we're going to keep as many trees as we possibly can.
Can I have a follow up question, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
My observation is that you are looking to build dwellings that are 746 or so square feet. I can tell you I'm living in a 976 square foot space, and it's rather tight. So I understand what you're looking at is very minimalist sort of building structure. You expect the people to enjoy nature and enjoy the community more than sit in their homes, which is a good thing. Anyway, I applaud your effort. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. All right, it looks like we've talked about a lot of the questions that are in the Q and A box related to the conservation easement, stormwater. I we have some
Um I we have some more, uh one more person with their hand raised and this will be the last person before we move on because we're at about time. So uh Mary Wees Engelsman, we are going to unmute you and uh. You can unmute yourself and ask your question when you're ready.
Uh, David, thank you for taking my question. Um, can you hear me well?
Yep, we can hear you.
Thank you. Um, the question is for the development. Um. My question is the nineteen houses and they be built with the full basement crawl space or concrete pad?
Crawl space.
Okay, and what is the plan for removal of the soil? It will be removed out of the site or dump it near the house and. If so, that will create an another gradients for the run of water to adjacent properties that we're trying to avoid.
Yeah, we'll be, we will be exporting excess material off-site. Um, we want to have as you know, as much of the the ground in the development undisturbed as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your question. All right, we are at the point in the evening where we need to move on uh to the hearing portion. Um there are some. Uh questions that are still in the question and answer box. I will provide these to our Eagle staff um so that they have them. Uh thank you um to Curtis and Joe and our panelists for being part of this Q and A panel and for all of you for asking such great questions. Uh but we're gonna have to move on to make sure everyone has a chance to make a comment tonight. And in case you don't want to make a comment tonight, um there are other ways you can make a comment uh through the Eagles My Enviro. Uh system or application, you can provide your comments uh under submission HPN KH six Z. T nine zero nine one, and we're gonna put the the link to My Enviro in the chat, so you'll see that. And then you can also by mail uh submit comments to Eagle. That's E G L E Water Resources Division. Kalamazoo District Office, seven nine five three Adobe Road. That's Kalamazoo, Michigan, four nine zero zero nine. Uh read that again for our phone-in callers. You can send comments to Eagle Water Resources Division, Kalamazoo District Office, seven nine five three Adobe Road, and it's spelled A D O B E. Kalamazoo, Michigan, four nine zero zero nine and whoops. Sorry about that. The comment period after this public hearing will be open for ten days, um so that'll be through uh the fourteenth. So pu- the public comment period will be open uh until then. So right now. We are gonna move on to the hearing portion uh of tonight's meeting. Uh so Riley, I'd like to invite you to read the opening statement tonight.
Thank you. Um as mentioned earlier this evening, my name is Riley Walsh and I am a district representative of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. Or Eagle Water Resources Division. I'll I will be serving as the hearing officer for this public hearing on Eagle submission number HPN dash KH six Z. Dash T nine zero nine one. With me tonight is Derek Haraldson, District Supervisor in the Kalamazoo District Office. Prior to this evening, notice of this hearing was published in the New Buffalo Times on November twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. And on the online Eagle calendar. The applicant and their consultant have had an opportunity to describe the proposed project, and I will now describe our agenda for the rest of the evening. In a moment, I will begin with some background information about why we are here tonight. I will then describe the purpose of tonight's hearing, how your comments will be used, and what will happen after the hearing. Following that, I will outline how we will take your comments and it will be then be time for you to provide your comments and we'll spend most of our time tonight listening to them. At the end of the hearing, I will read a closing statement. So to begin with some background information, the Water Resources Division is responsible for administering several programs that help protect. In the lakes, streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes, and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate activities like dredging, filling, installing structures like houses, dams, docks, and marinas. And installing shore protection. The laws governing these responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act nineteen ninety-four. P A four fifty-one as amended or Act four fifty-one. We are here tonight because Curtis McDonald has proposed to construct a nineteen-lot residential development impacting a total of point two one eight acres of forested wetland. Regulated activities proposed in wetland include the construction of a road to access the development. Construction of a driveway to access Lot eleven. Installation of equalizer culverts and installation of utility lines. Wetland impacts are proposed to be mitigated for via the purchase of point four four acres of forested wetland bank credits. For a permit to be granted for this project, Eagle must find that the proposed activities meet certain criteria set by Part three oh three. Wetlands Protection of Act four fifty-one. When reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of Part three oh three, Eagle is charged to consider the following as required by Section three oh three one one. First, Eagle must determine that the issuance of a permit is in the public interest, that the permit is necessary to. Realize the benefits derived from the activity and that the activity is otherwise lawful. Second, Eagle must determine that the issuance of a permit will not result in an unacceptable disruption to aquatic resources. Third, Eagle must determine that one of the following is true. Uh first, that the proposed activity is dependent on being located in a wetland. Or second, that a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in Curtis McDonald's application an opportunity to provide information for Eagle to consider. Before a decision is made to issue or deny a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use information that relates to the criteria in Act four fifty-one. Some of you may simply want to express your support for or opposition to the project. We will be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is by law not allowed to based on base our decision. On whether there is widespread support or opposition to a project. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information Eagle will will consider when deciding to issue or deny a permit for the proposed project. The public comment period for this public hearing is open for ten days from the date of this hearing, ending on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the ten-day public comment period will also be considered in Eagle's decision. Following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will decide either to issue a permit for the project as proposed. Issue a per uh issue a permit with modifications or send it a letter of denial. You may find out what the decision is by checking the Eagle My Enviro portal website and searching for the application number. Which again is HPN dash KH six Z dash T nine zero nine one. Please follow the following steps as we begin taking your comments to ensure that the hea- hearing is conducted in a fair manner. Uh first, we're going to begin by calling on those who indicated when they registered that they would like to speak. If you did not indicate when you registered that you would like to speak, but you still have a comment to provide, please raise your hand in the Zoom toolbar. Um after we get through the people who pre-registered and indicated that they'd like to speak, we will next call on all those who raise their hand in the Zoom toolbar. If you are calling in by phone, please follow the directions of the moderator on how to raise your hand. You may also submit written comments to Eagle via My Enviro Portal, email, or US Mail. When your name is called, your microphone will be unmuted. As you begin your comments, please state your name and any group or association you may represent. Each person will be given four minutes to make their comments. We will indicate uh we will indicate to you when you have one minute left. Please begin wrapping up and and within the allotted time. If need be, we will indicate when your time has ended. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Please recognize that Eagle staff are here to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed project and to listen to those comments. Thank you for your attention and we will now begin uh calling the names of those who have indicated that they would like to make a statement.
Yeah, many thanks, Riley. Uh just a couple of quick things before we get started uh calling names. Um uh I don't think I mentioned it before, but if we didn't get to your question previously, we will provide Riley's contact information. Uh after we take everybody's comments, but this but will not be answering questions during this com- this public hearing comment period. This is your opportunity to make a comment for. This project. Um as Riley mentioned, everybody will have four minutes. Um everyone will also give a one-minute heads up. Uh when we're doing something a little different tonight, you will. Uh we're trying out uh a new process as it relates to keeping track of your time. So when you start speaking, where you'll see a timer pop up in the upper right-hand corner that tells you how much time you have left and it'll count down. And then when you hear the sound. That'll mean you have one minute left. So uh we'll give you that heads-up ding when you have about a minute left, so you can start to to wrap up your comments. As Riley mentioned, we have a list of names uh who during registration indicated that they wanted to make a comment. Uh we're gonna start with that list and then we'll move on to anyone else who wants to make a comment. And we'll do that through raising your hand um either in uh selecting pound two if you're by the on the phone or. Um hitting the raised hand icon after we get through this list of names. Um so and don't forget to list your name and then if you have any affiliation as well. Um so the first three names that are on my list, uh it doesn't appear that they're here, but I will. Call their names and then if you are here under another under another name, feel free to raise or by phone, feel free to raise your hand and we'll we'll call on you. So Nancy Carlson. Debbie Engelsman. And Basia Kleinowitz. So if you if you're in the audience here, we're not seeing your name. But if you're, okay, let me see here. Looks like Stan. Um I'm gonna unmute you. Um Stan, is there one of those names at your phone?
Yeah, Basha Clinsevich is uh here in the room with me.
Okay, gotcha. All right, so she can or can feel free to make your comment.
Um my comment is about um preserving the uh mission statement of Chickaming Township. And according to your plan, it it seems to be nice. Um however, I'm very concerned about a lot of old growth trees coming down in our area for the last several years. Um it really affects everything in the area. I've been here for many, many years and I've seen how. Much devastation there's been to our nature and I would prefer to put a moratorium on more developments personally. Um there seem to be plenty of empty lots, lots that have already been clear-cutted that are standing abandoned. And I don't see any reason why those lots couldn't be developed over. Again, cutting down more of our nature. Um and then I'm also curious about um. Uh what is it? Um economic uh housing for people, low-income housing for people who. Work in the service industry and can't afford the multimillion homes that um. That uh are now being sold in our once pristine area. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. Uh and I should mention that uh Stan, while we have you unmuted, if there's anybody else on the line. That would like to make a comment, we can take them at at this time uh before moving on. Is there anyone else staying on the line?
Uh sir, no, that's just uh myself and and Basha in the room. We she hasn't a computer that's reliable and I I have one semi-reliable. Thank you.
Does I guess, does anybody else there want to make a comment or can we move on?
You can move on, sir.
Okay, yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Couldn't see that camera.
All right, and then another name we had was Debbie Engelsman. I see a Mary Wees Engelsman. Um we have unmuted you. Is is Debbie there or did? Are you speaking for Debbie's behalf? Are you are you there?
Uh I'm here. Um she's in a different location and trying to use different platform. I don't know if she have the difficulties.
Okay. Yeah, I am uh oh, I see you're here. She must have just got. No, I don't. No, I don't see Debbie. Sorry. Um I would say if uh. If Debbie isn't able to get on, she's also welcome to call the phone number um and call him by phone. Uh or she can make a comment via one of those other methods that we talked about, and I should also mention that we will list that screen again with the other other ways to make a comment. But there should also be a a phone-in method for for calling in. Did and while we have you unmuted, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Uh yes, uh yes, yes, I will. I will take the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Yep, you can begin when you're ready.
Okay, um thank you again for taking the time. Uh obviously, uh. I'm new to this area, but since I live in my house. We lost a couple of big trees. Um water is obviously a saturated. Um. Everybody know then Michigan's um have a very high water table. And this couple of questions. First of all, um. Everybody have a good intention. Not carrying trees, but you have to bring the water, bring equipment, bring heavy equipment. You cannot make a slalom around trees. You have to clear a lot. There is no picking or anything. I understand intention, but there'd be a lot of trees removed. Because you have to. That's how things are done. So I don't believe it and they'll be trying to save as many can because that's 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 impossible. Second thing, there is proposed a retention pond. I have a two question. Uh. Did anybody study what's happening if you have a torrential rain and the water crease the pond? Uh or they be catastrophic failure? Where the water will go? Obviously to adjacent properties. And from history, there is a couple of places I know when. There was retention ponds built for that purpose and there was catastrophic failure when houses was flooded. With eight feet of water in the basements. So I don't believe them, they can prevent anything by building a retention pond. Second, uh one more thing is the pond will have a some kind of uh. Mechanical pump to move the water. Like. Or they be just standing water. Because if they be just standing water, then we create another habitat for mosquitoes. With the very bad nuisance and a lot of one can have a, you know. West Nile's virus or some kind of diseases, so. We don't really need more open standing water next to our properties. Um basically. I don't believe then this project will have minimal or no impact on our property. Or adjacent property. It's just, it's not true. It will have a huge impact. And. I'm not happy about it. I don't know if anything could be done about it, but um. It it will it will change the way we live. And how much water is in our property. Because right now I have a three sub-ponds. Working pretty much all the time. To get the water away from from my crawl space. And I'm just worried what's gonna happen when this development will be put in place. That's that's my big concern. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful night.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. All right. Uh next on the list is Fran Wercells. Fran, we are gonna unmute you.
Unmute. Are you, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Hi, I would like to share with everybody my own personal experience of what happens when part of a wooded stretch of property is developed. Our Union Pier property has been in our family for over seventy years. It includes an undeveloped parcel that is part of a three parcel, slightly over one acre, stretch of wooded land along Lake Shore Road. In twenty twenty-one, the owner of the largest parcel decided to develop his lot, which was the lowest lying parcel of the three. And always appeared to have standing water. No, it was not classified as a wetland. Most all of the trees and shrubs were removed and many, many truckloads of fill were brought in to improve the building site. Which included a four-foot concrete crawl space. Only a few trees remained and some small bushes were planted. This summer in Union Pier, we had three weeks of intermittent rain from July twenty-sixth to August seventeenth. We had heavy rains in the past and some low areas were flooded, but usually the water was absorbed in four to five days. Not this year. At least nine parcels to the south and east of the developed site had standing. At least nine parcels to the south and east of the developed site had standing water for weeks, including properties that had never flooded. Water runs both above and underground and this water had nowhere to go. I had to find rubber waiting boots. It wasn't ankle deep, it was shin deep to get out of my house for the first time since we bought it in nineteen fifty-three. I consulted with the Marion County Drain Commission contractors and they agreed with me. The water had no place to go. Um, its previous place was gone. As part of their plan of continuous improvement of drainage systems, the Marion County Drain Commission is rebuilding the drain system in our area starting in twenty twenty-four and will include stub drains and catch basins on granted easements at no cost to the owners. We are hoping, praying that this will provide some relief in the future. Their letter to property owners that may be affected clearly noted. Now listen to this. Landowners can explore installing a private drain network on their parcel. These systems can be installed by a contractor that you hire directly and are connected to the county drain. It will not be installed, maintained, improved, or replaced by the Drain Commission. Also, written approval from the Drain Commission and additional state county permits may be required. Which brings me to the problem. The adjacent properties to this development, will they be required to establish their own drain system? Do you know that Marion County, if Marion County is planning to review their drain system? Or did we just get lucky over there on, uh, near Lake Shore Road? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. Alright, uh, next up is Tom Gold and then after Tom is Helen Mullins. Uh, and then that completes the, uh, names that I have on my list. Uh, so after we get through Tom and Helen, we will get to everyone, anyone with a raised hand. And again, if you're on the phone, you can select pound two to raise your hand in Zoom. So Tom, you are up. You can begin when you're ready.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great. Thank you for having the, uh, meeting. It's been, uh, very, uh, helpful. Um, I understand that your job is to determine whether or not Mr. McDonald is within the ordinance and, um, uh, some of these other issues such as what's gonna happen with the runoff and, and other things are gonna left, be left to other agencies. But also I think part of your, uh, job is to determine whether, um, you know, the, the juice is worth the squeeze. For example, lot eleven, lot nineteen, lot eight, lot seven, lot fifteen, which push way out into the, into the wetlands, uh, especially eleven, uh, seem to be asking, uh, for a lot of impact uh, for you know, very little gain. Uh, and I think that within your purview, you should be able to limit the number of building sites here. Uh, because he is pushing right up against the wetlands boundaries and some of the other commenters have said uh, that they're concerned about how you're gonna keep people out of the wetlands uh, dur- during occupancy. If we have nineteen homes and they're all occupied on any given weekend and some of them are rented out with people who could care less about what goes on in the neighborhood, you're not gonna keep them out of there. They'll be tramping all through the wetlands. They're not gonna put up fencing all the way around this thing. I mean, there's economics here of what can be afforded and what can't be afforded. I don't understand quite honestly how he thinks he's gonna make money on lot eleven with what it's gonna cost to get out there. It seems absurd, uh, to do what he's planning on doing. And it creates this huge scar across the wetlands for one lot. So if you do nothing else, I really hope that you lop that one off of his development. It's, it just doesn't seem to be. Uh, even though it's, it, you know, he can buy mitigation, uh, credits and all the rest of it. It just seems to be asking for, for, for way too much. Uh, some of the other issues here, uh, I'm a contractor, I, a, a local contractor and uh, also uh, involved with the Chickaming Township, uh, government, so, uh, but I don't believe that they will be able to contain, uh, construction activity within the wetlands boundaries, especially being as close as they are with, with, with those lots. I mean, I work with contractors every day and nobody's that careful and nobody, Eagle is overwhelmed all over the state. No one's gonna come out and supervise this. And it's gonna be up to whether or not Mr. McDonald, uh, s- closely supervises this and I sincerely doubt any of that stuff's gonna happen. So yeah, he could go back and fix stuff later on, but in the meantime, um, for example, the, the little bit of wetland between lots seven, eight and nine, this finger of wetland, like the contractors are all gonna respect that during construction. It's a joke. Uh, it's the same thing out at eighteen and nineteen. So I think your job is to look at are we allowing too much impact for this? Uh, this development. I understand he bought it thinking that, uh, uh, he was gonna be able to do the previous, uh, layout, which I'm very familiar with. And he's now been squeezed into this much smaller thing and he's trying to make it all work economically. That's, that's understandable, but I think your job is to mitigate the, the impact here. So minimize the impact, excuse me. That, uh, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comment, Tom. Alright, uh, Helen Mullins, uh, you are unmuted. Uh, you can unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Hi, um, I was wondering if it would make a difference on Eagle's perspective if this project used listed in the application was not, um, was not private but commercial because, um, it is being, I know that these houses are being planned to be built and bought from people, but I also have heard directly from a co-founder of Juniper Ho- Holiday and Home, which is also, um, David McDonald. Curtis McDonald's, uh, partner, that these, that this development is all for short-term rentals. And so I just feel like if the application on page eight, just project use was listed as commercial instead of private, would you guys look at it differently? Um, because short-term rentals have been deemed as, um, commercial property by the Michigan Appeals Court. So I just wanna have that out there. I know that this is more of a township thing, but I feel like since it's on the application for Eagle, it should just like be honest and clear from the beginning on that front. So that's my comment because my other concerns were already addressed about the wetlands. So thanks.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Alright, so next we have a phone-in caller and again, uh, well, actually we're gonna go through the raised hands. So again, if you have not yet spoken, um, and would like to make a comment, you can raise your hand in Zoom by selecting the raised hand icon or pound two if you're on the phone. And we do a phone-in caller ending with zero six one eight. Uh, you can begin when you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm, I'm Nancy and I was on the list. I had submitted questions, but my name didn't get called earlier. Or I had submitted comments or said I wanted to make comments. Um, so thank you for taking my, my comments again. Uh, I would agree with Mr. Gold as far as, um, his, his comments regarding the compactness of this plan and how they can really avoid impacting the wetlands with the construction. Um, I'm, the backside of my property borders on lots four, five, seven, and six is also there. Uh, we have been there for over a hundred years. Um, we do have some water on the property here and there, even though it is not designated wetland. Um, I am concerned with four houses all the way across the back of all three hundred and thirty feet of my property. Um, they're going to cut trees down. Um, I am also concerned about water, water coming on, more water, additional water coming onto our property. Also the loss of trees across our whole back lot line, um, is not a good situation, situation for us. The other comment I'd like to make regards, is regarding the retention pond. Um, the only retention ponds I've seen without aeration become stagnant. Um, they, they breed bacteria, they can be hazardous to people's health and they can smell. So I'm wondering if there's going to be any aeration required for that, if that retention pond is, is, is installed um, to avoid a situation like that. Um, so those are my comments. Let me see if there is anything else. Um, yes, it's, uh, the water displacement, the removal of trees and stagnant water. And I agree with Tom Gold's assessment of this plan. Thank you. Thanks for taking my comments.
Yeah, thanks for your comment, Nancy. Right. Next up is Donna DiPaolo. Donna, you are unmuted on our end. You can begin, unmute yourself and begin your comment when you're ready.
Thank you for taking my comments. Uh, I agree with many of the comments so far. They, uh, brought up many of the things I'm concerned about as well. In addition, uh, I'm wondering, uh, who would be policing the homeowners association uh, to properly maintain this project as the years go on? Uh, perhaps we expect more rain as the years go on and we know with, uh, sedimentation, erosion, the angle of the street changing and the culverts filling in with soap. Uh, I'm wondering how do we assure that the proper money is spent by the homeowners association to maintain this? Uh, I also don't believe that, uh, such a precision construction plan can possibly be followed by a construction company. Uh, thank you. That's all my additional comments.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Alright, uh, next up is Peter Britt. Uh, you are unmuted on our end, Peter. You can begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Uh, I'm, my comment is regarding the retention pond, um, which is, uh, upland from, uh, our neighbor's property. Our neighbor, uh, Mike Koenig is in eighty-nine, at eighty-nine thirty-five, um, Warren Woods Road. And his property backs up to, uh, the south end of the development. Um, and is, seems to be very close to where this retention pond is gonna be. And, uh, he already gets quite a bit of water, um, on his property. That's, it's been designated as a wetland for a few years now. And I don't see how that water in a retention pond, uh, upland from his property won't, uh, affect the, uh, the water level on his property. Um, his property has water very close to an outbuilding, uh, within a couple of feet of an outbuilding, uh, when it's quite wet. Uh, when the weather's wet. And I just see this as being a huge problem for him. Um, the placement of that, uh, of their retention pond. That's it.
Alright, yeah, thanks. Uh, thanks for comments, Peter. Alright. Uh, I, I don't have any other raised hands at this point. We'll give you a couple of seconds in case there's anyone out there who has not yet made a comment and you would like to make a comment. Feel free to raise your hand using the raised hand icon. Um, and, or if you're on the phone, it's like pound two. Uh, I should mention that it's one comment per person. So if you've already spoken, uh, you can't make a comment, but we will take a comment from someone else who might be on the line. So, um, next up, I'll save a couple raised hands. Uh, Amy Coleman, uh, we are unmuting you and you can begin when you're ready.
I'm sorry, I must have hit the wrong button.
Okay, no, no problem, Amy. I will, uh, lower your hand for you then. Alright, we have another phone, phone-in caller. Um, uh, last four digits is your one-two-nine.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, my name is Deborah Engelsman. I've had some problems with the computer that I'm using. Uh, two of the things I'd like to say is that all the trees that you're talking about taking down to build the homes and also this retention pond are right next to all the existing homes that have water problems. Some of us had gone to the town to talk to the board, to some board members about what can be done if these homes create problems on our property. And we were told that we need to go and talk to the new owners to fix the problems their prop, this building has caused our homes now or in the future. That makes no sense whatsoever. So what has to be done is a plan has to be put in place to guard our homes against water damage. Right now, we're not talking only about storm runoff, but move, removing all these trees is gonna be devastating. We had two trees removed from our property right before we purchased it and there is still standing water there. We have an immense amount of water in our crawl space. And it's very costly to get rid of this. So I understand Curtis wants to make money, but you have to protect the community that you're coming into. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comment, Deborah. Happy you're able to get on. Alright, is there anybody else, uh, who has not yet made a comment that would like to make a comment? Um, again, we'll give it a few more seconds. Uh, just wanna let you know, if we don't have any other raised hands or comments for tonight, uh, we'll provide that slide again that has the other ways to make a comment in case you have something to add. You'll have that opportunity. And then also we'll provide, uh, contact information in case you have, uh, additional questions or in court, or in case we didn't get to your question during the question and answer session. So with that, I'm not seeing anyone else who would like to make a comment. So no other raised hands. So Riley, I'm going to, um, like to read the closing statement for us tonight.
Great, thank you. Uh, thank you all for your comments and your cooperation. We appreciate your interest in the proposed project and that you took the time to be here tonight. As indicated in the beginning of the hearing, you may submit additional written comments until December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Following the close of the public comment period, we will consider all comments received and we'll make a decision on the proposed project. Just to remind those who want to, um, submit a written comment, comments can be submitted via my Enviro portal, via email or via US mail. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you Riley. Um, as Riley mentioned, the other way to submit unofficial comments, uh, they were put in the chat. Uh, you can see, I'll see them up here through my Enviro submission HPN KH six Z T nine zero nine one. Uh, or by mail, Eagle Water Resources Division, Kalamazoo District Office, seven nine five three Adobe Road. Kalamazoo, Michigan, four nine zero zero nine. Uh, and again, it comment period's open until December fourteenth. Uh, and then as promised, uh, here's Riley's contact information in case you have any further questions. Um, Riley can be reached, Riley Walsh, uh, five one seven two eight one six 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 six. That's five one seven two eight one six 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 six. Or at Walsh R two, and that's spelled W A L S H R two, as in the number two, at michigan.gov. And that's W A L S H R two at M I C H I G A N dot gov. Alright, uh, any closing comments for us tonight, Derek?
I just, uh, appreciate everybody participating, you know, taking some time, uh, out of your evening to join us for the hearing. Um, it was, uh, with the civil discourse, so I appreciate that as well. Um, so that's really all. Just, uh, wanna thank everybody for, you know, taking time to join us and, uh, and for being part of the hearing.
Yeah, thanks Derek. Uh, thanks Riley. And, uh, of course, thanks to all of you for being part of this process, making statements and asking questions. Uh, last thing I have, just wanna remind you that this hearing was recorded and a closed caption recording of the hearing will be on Eagle's YouTube channel in a couple of days. Uh, I hope you all have a great rest of your night. Thank you.